I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening everyone.
Good evening.
Meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Okay, we'll start off at item number three, public comment. Is there any public comments? State your name and address and come up to the microphone, please, Mr. Burtzle.
Paul Burtzle, 42 Jupiter Drive. About a week ago, I went down to town garage and talked to Dennis. We have a sinkhole up there in the corner of Evening Star and Jupiter. He said he'd take a look at it. I put a cone in there, a whole week went by, nobody showed up. On that corner, all school buses stopped there to pick up children. Today, a town truck was up there, just checking the drains, I guess. My neighbor across the street stopped him. Hey, see the sinkhole over here? Oh. So he was telling me that I went down to town garage and I talked to Dennis. I says, "Well, I'm going down to selectmen's meeting tonight and I'm gonna tell them about it." About fifteen minutes later, they come up and just threw a couple shovels of asphalt in the hole. Not gonna solve the problem, 'cause underneath the gravel, it's moved out, 'cause it caved in. You get the asphalt on top, "Oh, we'll come back and fix it." I says, "Yeah, you're gonna come back and fix it?" Like, two years ago, you were supposed to fix the, uh, one of the catch basins down the corner of my property. You put the grate in, and he said, "Two weeks later, you put the new catch basin." That's two years ago, didn't fix it yet. I mean, it was a safety hazard, 'cause a motorcycle came down, some kids came down on a bicycle, it was dark, and then see the hole. They could've went for a header.
Rich, can I ask him a question? Just, in comparison to your front door, where is the sinkhole? So if I'm s- if your back is to your front door and you're looking out at Jupiter?
If I'm looking out at Jupiter, be on my left.
Okay.
On the left. And it's not, it's in the travel lane, too.
Going down, towards the down part of the hill?
No, going toward the down part. It's right at the intersection there.
Okay.
The ladder part of it, going down the hill. But, that's not gonna solve the problem. I told Dennis, I said, "You should cut it out and fix it right." But I guess he's on vacation and the assistant foreman, when he heard I was coming here, in fifteen minutes, I said there was a truck up there just putting some asphalt in the hole.
Okay.
I hope they come back and fix the problem, just don't let it go and go through the road, just caves in right there.
I'll take a ride and take a look at it in the morning.
You'll see the big patch of asphalt.
Sorry, okay.
Okay?
Excellent.
Right, thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, hearing no public comment, we'll close public comment. Well, on item number four, approved minutes from the May 7, 2015, that should be special meeting, got a motion to do so? Motion by Al, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Uh, the chair votes aye, motion passes five zero one, and please note Anne Marie's abstention. Item number five, approved minutes from the May 11, 2015, special meeting, to have a motion to do so? Motion by Nicole, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair abstains, motion passes five zero one. Item number six, first selectman's report. Update on the projected end of the 2014-2015 fiscal year budget. On the very conservative side, we are trending towards a flat budget year with potentially a very small surplus on the municipal side. Tomorrow, I'll be sending out a memo to freeze all non-discretionary spending without prior approval from myself or Doug. We expect to keep this freezing place until the last week of the fiscal year. At that point, we will be much more certain with the final numbers. As you know, the town and the Board of Ed will be merging workers' comp going forward into one inter-services fund. While we'll be able to prop- this will allow us to properly budget for the upcoming 2015-2016 fiscal year, we will need to absorb a great deal of losses on the Board of Ed's side for the current 14-15 fiscal year. The Board of Ed currently stands about $300,000 over budget in this line item. The municipal side has a current reserve of about $150,000 to upset those budget overruns. I expect to be coming back to this board and the Board of Finance in July for a transfer from the fund balance for over $150,000 to cover these losses. Moving forward, the new inter-service fund will allow the town to better absorb the out-of-the-ordinary years for workers' comp for the Board of Education. On Friday, May 29, we'll be holding the dedication ceremony for the new flagpole at French Memorial Park. The scheduled time, the scheduled start time as of right now is seven o'clock, but that could change a little bit, maybe 7:15, 7:30, just depending. We have not yet finalized all the plans, as we are trying to have several different town groups take part. Once I have everything set, I'll let you all know, but I did want to provide a heads-up so you can all plan accordingly. Attended a meeting with the project engineers and the DOT regarding the paving of Remen Street. During the meeting, we reestablished timelines and commitment points. We are scheduled to go out to bid in the fall of 2015 and scheduled to break ground in spring of 2016. Attended a meeting with Oxford, Derby, and Beacon Falls regarding the joint purchasing of products and services as well as high-dollar equipment. The meeting was very productive and we'll be meeting again this Thursday to continue the discussions. I signed the first contract of the roadwork contracts this morning. Work is expected to begin in the next week or so. We will be awarding five more bids over the next few weeks, with work taking place throughout the summer. And then finally, the Seymour sweeps report will be available for our next meeting. It's taken a little bit longer than we had expected to compile all of the details and the data. With that, I will close the first selectman's report. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to add to the agenda, discussion and possible action regarding resolution for the Workforce Investment and Opportunities Act. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action regarding resolution for Workforce Investment and Opportunities Act. You should all have the resolution that was given to you by Roy, and I'll read this into the record. Whereas the cities and/or towns of Ansonia, Beacon Falls, Bridgeport, Dariann, Derby, Easton, Fairfield, Greenwich, Monroe, New Canaan, Norwalk, Oxford, Seymour, Shelton, Stanford, Stratford, Trumbull, Westport, Weston, Wilton, all of which are organized and existing under and by virtue of the laws of the state of Connecticut entered into a certain agreement, whereas the original local elected officials entered into said agreement in July of 2000 for the purposes of complying with the Workforce Investment Act enacted by the United States Congress in 1998 to establish a new workforce development system to replace the Job, Training, Partnership Act. And whereas, in 2014, Congress passed the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, which was signed into law on July 22, 2014, specifically intended to replace and supersede WIA. And whereas, the WIOA will take effect on July 1, 2015, and whereas, the Local Chief Elected Officials Agreement must reflect and meet the requirements of WIOA. Now therefore, the parties agree as follows. Throughout the Local Elected Officials Agreement, as amended, the term Workforce Investment Act shall be replaced with the term Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. The term Workforce Investment Area shall be replaced with the term Workforce Development Area, and the term Workforce Investment Board shall be replaced with the term Workforce Development Board. The agreement shall comply with all requirements of WIOA as prescribed by law and remain in effect until WIOA expires or is repealed by operation of law, and the agreement will automatically renew upon the implementation of any superseding legislation. W. Kurt Miller, First Selectman, is hereby authorized to execute the amendment to the agreement. So with that, can I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Kurt, go ahead.
I'm gonna defer these to Rich.
No, the only thing, I, this is quite a group of cities and towns, I don't, you know, obviously none of us were, you know, involved in this in 2000. I just wonder how they came up with this group of towns, cities and towns, really.
I don't know. I would tend to think that they probably used the southwestern cog regions, it seems to look like, the old V cog, and then Greater Bridgeport, and then down into southwest, I would assume. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
Yeah, 'cause it looks like us, Bridgeport and Stratford. Or Stanford, excuse me, Stratford. See, I can. No, Shelton's been with us. Yeah, because Rick's been there. Rick was there ten, eleven years, and before him.
Well, that's the Trumbull.
Yeah. Monroe. Yeah, there's a lot more down. Well, Easton, Dariann, New Canaan, Stanford, Westport. I think it was the three cogs. So, Al, do you have a question?
I'm unfamiliar with the Workforce Investment Act. Can you just give me, just a quick background what that was, as quickly?
It's a job training site. Well, it's job training legislation that was created in response, well, it superseded the prior act. It was also of the same nature. What I understand, it is, this particular organization has two job training centers plus a mobile site that goes along with the various communities. It was also my understanding, it was funded by the President.
So is it educating people in the community with careers they may be interested in?
It's the workplace.
Career path, or?
It's the workplace.
It's the workplace in the valley.
Okay. Somewhat, yeah, I mean, I kind of, I have an idea what this was, I was just curious, I just wanted more detail. All right, good.
Anything else? Yeah. Yep.
For the state.
This, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, actually, Lou, a special town meeting regarding two transfers. Okay, so we have the two transfers from the special town meeting. So at this point, then, I will entertain a motion to approve transfer control number 10, in the amount of $87,530.95, coming from residential garbage and going to snowplow overtime as presented. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. And then I'll entertain a motion to approve transfer, I had a control number 11, in the amount of $85,894.87, coming from contingency labor and going to salary regular employees' public works, $67,734.87. Social Security public works, $5,181.72. Retirement public works, $8,128.18. Regular salary employees' transfer station, $4,053.57. Social Security transfer station, $310.10. And retirement transfer station, $486.43. Have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Karen, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion?
Read your comment.
Oh, geez.
Dash, 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 dash. Okay, if there's no other positive comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, set special town meeting for Tuesday, June 2, 2015, at 6:45 PM regarding appropriating $2 million for design and construction of an artificial turf athletic field and grant stand at Seymour High School, AKA Project CSAP 2015-17, and related improvements and amenities to be funded in part by an estimated $1,895,000 in grants from the state of Connecticut, DEEP. Can I have a motion to set the town meeting as presented? Second. Motion by Nicole, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five, excuse me, six zero. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, discussion, take possible action regarding potential damage reimbursement to Peter Kubik. Okay, in your packets, or in your packets, you have a packet. And also, Peter's here with us, so if we have any questions as well. You'll see an email from Peter to The Dawn. It says, "On February 19, 2015, I was traveling down Bongay Road, where I hit not only a pothole, but a piece of the asphalt protruding up and out of the hole. This caused damage to both my tire and rim. I immediately called Public Works to report this condition. I filed a police report also. I received notification that the damages would not be covered by the town's insurance. I disagree with the insurance company's rejection of, of the, of this, it should be, and request reimbursement for the damages occurred. Thank you." Okay, so in your packet, you see the attached police report, which was filed. See, a bill for Tire Shack. And it is my understanding, and Pete can correct me if I'm wrong, this happened right at the bottom of Bongay Road, so for safety's sake, Tire Shack was right there, is that?
Yeah.
The block. And actually, we have those pictures attached, so everybody can see the hole in the rim, hole in the tire, and also just a picture of the black tire and things. And there's also a picture of the pothole itself. Couple different, I know they're tough to see with the black and white pictures, but. I, I think it still gives enough of a, of you, to see the difference. And then that last one is just a, bless you, bless you. One more. There you go. Bless you. Always three. So, all right, so we see those. We see those, so, any questions with this? You know, we've, I mean, knock on wood, we haven't seen as many of these as I had anticipated after the winter that we've had. It's been practiced in the past for the town, in situations like this, when the insurance didn't cover, unless there was some special circumstance or some other cause that the town would cover these, these damages. Rich, you have any comments?
No, I, I think we're covering it, we think it's more of an obvious issue.
Um, and this would come out of the legal settlements. Line is where we would generally take these, where we historically have taken those since, since way back. So, any questions or comments?
I just, Pete, I think you did a great job of getting this, all this information and taking care of business the way you needed to, to give us the proper information. Thank you.
I think it's the engineering a little bit, too.
Yeah.
So. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, at this point, then, I'll entertain a motion to reimburse Peter Kubik Jr. for damages to his vehicle for repair to a tire and rim due to damage caused by a pothole on Bongay Road in the amount of $628.79.
So moved.
A motion by Karen, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion?
Has the pothole been fixed?
I believe it was fixed before I got out of Tire Shack.
I know how long the potholes are. No. I don't know. I think technically, insurance covers if it's reported, and we don't take action if it's unreported. And they hit it, then, insurance doesn't cover it, so. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Thank you, Pete. Okay, item number 10, executive session, we have no executive session this evening. Item number 11, we have no appointments. However, at our next meeting in June, first meeting in June, we will be appointing the Standing Building Committee. We found our seven people, so we will be doing that. And we are very fortunate to have seven professionals, which is very good, and engineers, and so on, so we're in very good shape with that. Okay, item number 12, tax refunds and abatements, Nicole.
From the tax collector to the Board of Selectmen, the following overpayments of tax payments in the total $103.48 need to be approved for refund in accordance with provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statute, dated the 14th May of, 14th day of May, Dana Flack Tax Office.
Nicole. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the tax collector's report as presented? Motion by Anne Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? So everybody can just check it back. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 13, which are transfers. We have two transfers in front of us. The first transfer is, we'll go through with the control number 14. That transfer is in the amount of $6,796.60. Will be coming out of contingency labor, and we're going to, going to water in the amount of $4,211.74, and sewer fees, $2,584.86. And I have a motion to approve the transfer as presented. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Under discussion, you can see the details, and also the bills attached. This is a combination of an increase in WPCA fees, as well as an increased use of water. One of the things when you put irrigation systems in parks and things midway through the year, obviously, we didn't have enough money budgeted. A lot of this is for Town Hall and for Broad Street Park, on that water, guys. Okay, if there's no questions or comments, and again, this will be passed to the Board of Finance as well. If there's no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next, there is no control number on this, so it is Town Council, and is in the amount of $49,000. It will come out of contingency labor and will be transferred to the Town Council line. And I have a motion to approve the transfer as presented. Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie, just under discussion. As you can see, we've had a heavier caseload than expected. The four labor contracts that we negotiated this year that went a year longer than we had anticipated is a good bulk of this number, it's about $20,000 worth, but, as you all know, we saved close to $350,000. So I think it was money well spent. Also, in this number, we have about $16,000 of Board of Education legal expenses that the town had to absorb, that we obviously did not have budgeted. That was a combination of workers' comp, as well as the breakdown in the snowmelt sidewalk system at Chappio Lo Presti School. We had to bring Rich in to assist with that, that issue. So, as I said, about $16,000 of this, $49,000 was absorbed on the Board of Education side, so. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, and again, this will be transferred to the Board of Finance as well. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Okay, next item, item number 14, under correspondence, we have a few correspondence. And Rich, I want you to take a look at these, if you could. The first one, I'll read into the record. Stayed in May 14, 2015. Dear First Selectman Miller, the Board of Fire Commissioners would like clarification regarding the Board of Fire Chiefs. After discussion at the May Commissioners' meeting, it was decided to receive this clarification by Town Council. We are asking if the Board of Fire Chiefs is a recognized board for the town of Seymour. If, in fact, it is not a recognized board by the town, we would ask, then, what procedures need to be followed regarding the fire chiefs having meetings, and what information may or may not be required to be filed with the Town Clerk's Office. If there are any questions or concerns, or if you would like to discuss this further, please feel free to contact me any time. Sincerely, Pete Sampery, Chairman of the Board of Fire Commissioners. So they are not in the charter, they are not in the statutes. The Board of Fire Commissioners themselves are going through and looking at a lot of different things. They want to make changes to their operating procedures and so on, and this is something that they need some clarification on. Uh, next piece of correspondence, also from the Board of Fire Commissioners. Board of Fire Commissioners would like to request that the Board of Selectmen appoint one member of the Board of Fire Commissioners to represent the Seymour Fire Department to the Communications Board. If there are any questions or concerns, or if the Board would like to discuss any further, please feel free to contact me at this time again. Signed by Pete Sampery. We also have a letter from Larry Dembeck to the Board of Selectmen. Per my conversation with Pete Jazerni, Seymour's Inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer, I have offered at no cost to the town to remove all usable timber from the Squantic Road area. As agreed, I will also stack the brush. The town of Seymour is not liable for any injury or damage to the equipment. The job will be completed and a timely and professional manager, respectfully, Larry Dembeck. So, Rich, if you can also look at this, just to make sure that there is no... He goes in and he clears a lot of the trees that have fallen over. They go in and they take them out, clear out all the other brush. On town property, yes. Yeah, so.
It's.
No. It's stuff that's already down.
Trees that have fallen down.
Yeah.
Trees that have died or.
My understanding is it becomes a fire hazard when it's on the ground like that, so he's doing us a service to do that, to pull it out. Otherwise, we would have to send some people in to go do that. I mean, and the trade-off for him is he gets the wood, which I believe he puts to use for his business, I believe, so. But again, that's why, Rich, if you can review that, just to make sure there's no issues. And then the last thing, again, is just an update on our prescription discount card, which is doing very well. Okay, that closes correspondence. Selectmen's public comments. Well, actually, before we do that, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda, public comment. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment? Wasn't sure if you guys had a say something for class, so. Just want to give you that opportunity, just in case. Okay, if there's no public comment, we'll move on to item number 15, Selectmen's public comments. Karen.
The only thing that I want to say tonight is I, I hope we get these roads repaired. You know, you've seen a serious accident with Pete, and the roads are really in bad shape. They really are. And it's not just our town. You know, one of the lead stories on Channel 3 tonight was the condition of the roads overall in Connecticut.
Absolutely.
Being so bad. So I hope that we really are able to move quickly to repair and, in some cases, replace some roads.
Well, we expect to have the 43 roads done by August. That'll take a big chunk of it. We're working on bringing the pothole killer back, hopefully for the end of June, so that will address a lot of the larger potholes, giving them more permanent repair. We had very good success with the potholes, that the pothole killer did last year, so we're gonna bring that back. So, you know, I would agree, it's, I, I think it's been an issue, not just statewide, but I think all around New England.
Yes.
Towns, for whatever reason, whether it be financial or just an inability to do so, didn't keep up with their roads over an extended period of time. You know, 10, 15 years, and plus with the swings in weather that we've been having, it's just been wreaking havoc on the roads. And unfortunately, once a road is gone, it's, it's gone.
Yeah. Are there any plans to oil some of the roads?
There's no plans to oil. That's, that used to be the old, every year, the town did half of the road with oil and sand, and the other half the next year. Um, that was kind of a early version of chip ceiling, to be quite honest. And I think we would all agree that we're not gonna go back down the chip ceiling route, at least not in the foreseeable future.
Okay.
So.
Kind of a follow-up to that, how about crack ceiling? Is that done at all?
Yes, crack ceiling is in the plan this year. Jim initially was looking to do about $100,000 worth of crack ceiling. That may have to be toned back a little bit because of the need to do some more major road repairs. But in his plan going forward, crack ceiling needs to be addressed, because when we look at roads that we've just done, when we did Dolan Circle as an example, and Brook Street and things like that, those roads need to be then looked at every single year. Those cracks need to be addressed immediately to make sure that we get the full life out of those roads. Unfortunately, what a lot of towns do is they, they do a road, they may do an overlay, as an example. They think that road's good for 10 or 15 years, and they ignore it, and by the time they circle back to it, the road is, is a mess. So what Jim is building into his plan, these roads that we've done over the last... So what Jim is building into his plan, these roads that we've done over the last couple of years now, to make sure we're circling back and we're reviewing them every year, so.
And the other thing is, I had the opportunity to attend the dedication at the playground in the media center at Chapel Hill-Lo Presti School. Last week, it was nice ceremony and.
Yeah, I did, too.
Nice occasion for the Board of Ed to remember these two folks who were highly respected educators and seniors.
Oh, yes. Excellent. Nicole? Al?
I just wanted to thank you and Bill Peck for taking care of the portable bathroom facilities issue at Gary Park over the past couple of weekends. I don't know of any complaints this past weekend. Everything went well. But that said, that's a high-traffic park, so I think maybe you can speak with Bill, or I'd be happy to speak with Bill, the problem solver. Maybe get another one up there, or we replace the company, whatever we have to do. But I, I'm glad that we didn't have that issue again this weekend. It was a little, little embarrassing.
We should have, you should have in your hands tomorrow to send out to soccer parents, an actual apology letter from the owners of Royal Flush.
Okay.
They've sent that in. The issue was, there was some, the porta potty itself was initially vandalized. They were supposed to come up to change the porta potty out, and they didn't do it, for whatever reason. The guy said, "Oh, we need to come back." Of course, they forgot to come back. So it sat that way for two weeks. We put a new porta potty in. The next day, they came back to check on it, and someone had gone on the floor again. So we're looking at getting locks on there. We're looking at turning the camera.
I think we should think about getting that permit bathroom, like, when you try it.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would be the same outcome. The only difference is.
Lock it like five, at dark or something?
They dumped cement in the toilets and flushed the toilets.
That's what they did last night.
So. There should, yeah. They were looking at, they were looking at putting a second porta potty up at Gary Park, at least through camp.
They should.
Season, so we'll see how that goes. Of course, you probably have heard, over the weekend, they took the porta potty at Socrans Pond and threw it into the pond.
Oh, cool.
So, yeah, Public Works had to pull that out on Monday morning. So now, and that park is wide open, so it's just a matter of catching these people who are doing it.
Well, I think the company has to use a little common sense, too, and maybe chain it to something, so they can't get thrown in the pond, right?
I don't know if, I don't know if they can be chained. I don't know. I don't know. But we've moved it further, closer to the road. Closer to the road. I don't, I don't, I don't know. But that's, so it was a very unfortunate situation. My Mother's Day, as I'm trying to cook dinner for my wife and my mother, I was getting pictures of the inside of the porta potty.
From a parent?
Yeah.
She copied me on it. Thanks.
Yeah, it really set, it really set the mood for that steak. I gotta be honest with you. It was excellent.
It was enough, yeah, it was a little.
But I felt the need to share with my mother and my, my wife, so they could enjoy it as well. Absolutely, absolutely. Of course I did. Of course I did. Thank you, Mr. Brodell. Ann Marie? Okay. Mr. Batoro, anything you'd like to add? Okay, with that, then, I will entertain a motion from Karen to a chair. Motion by Ann Marie, is there a second? Second by Karen. All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Mark the meeting closed.